The hour will be now for seven thirty. I'd like to call the October eighth, twenty twenty school committee meeting to order. First order is this pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Lord God, and to the great and perfect God. And to the great and perfect God, who has been with us all these long years.
Okay, before we begin, I guess one is what we're looking for. It is to be strengthened between the two, but you don't need a lesson. You just give a portion to this meeting, um, with the special pieces of discussion. As Dr. Gav is going to take the correction, because he can't have this. He's easy at a techno idiot, right? So I saw it, but I also am pretty much in charge of this. So it would have taught us.
Um, can you just, or Mr. Can you just give a thumbs up? Could you hear Nancy Galvin at all?
No, we, you could hear in and out, you know, some words maybe, but as a whole, we cannot, those that are on the computer cannot hear Nancy well.
All right, so we'll try it again.
Okay, for the listening audience, what I just wanted to explain is that, um, if you're hoping you can just say.
They're shaking their head now.
All right, so we'll hold on. Can you hear us out in, uh, Patrick, you can hear us pretty good? You can hear us fine. All right, the listening audience can hear us.
Yeah, it might just be a problem with those of us that are on Zoom. If, if, you know, I'm sure it's running fine, but just see, I'm just telling you, so if they say something that we may not hear or engage in the conversation, which is fine.
Okay.
People knew that.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Here's the go.
Okay, um, the first thing is, we have two relationships, but yeah. So for the listening audience, we're going to, um, introduce where you are, and then that A and B will talk about the message of my passion. Um, the first recognition of, there's been, um, teachers for being able to manage the class. These are very prominent and maybe people of the block who are from other schools. At C D C, we have a big family, a student, we have a teaching school, the public teaching community, the medicine, the study, and we've got one year in some of our studies for a bad night. We want to have the many members who are down. And we have four years, a one piece for once despite the many changes. As a school committee, we thank you all, and we hope to do it for the time. At the time, it's true, it's, it's really important, and you need to position yourself as number four person. Some examples to the world, um, phone work and charging with the system, connectivity problems, Google links, log in, login, and everything else. Um, they wanted all the guys, as many staff members, and especially faculty, and they were instructed to meet. They've created a kindergarten online website, provided drop-in special notes and teachers, help them set up through the classroom, learning and checking for things, and to jump into make open house websites. They've also been involved with introducing new ideas, like the ice face or drawing on robots. They've been providing special access to the development, and access to various tools and platforms to do these things. They're, they're constantly available, calm, kind, and caring. And, uh, so fellow colleagues want to thank all of them. This is due, Kimberly Farley at Bonsky, Ms. Tatar on St. Moses at Boydin, Ty Whorf at Christmas, and Jed Stefanowitz, uh, also, sorry about that, but, uh, but thank you very, very much for your efforts. At Johnson, two R teachers and a community specialist that collaborating on the new step toward hope, designed to maximize the engagement of students, whether they are learning in person or from home. We want to thank Allison O'Hara, Nicole DeCastro, and Megan Bramwell for their bravery to try something additional to their previous state of mind. Um, at Bird Middle School, they have a passion to exhibit themselves greatly by reaching out to all this highly encouraging and supportive of themselves by saying, of course, it's easy to focus on the negative because there's a lot of negative things happening, and you need to pay attention and you will attempt what works and how to stand and whether it's that. His effort, he and my mentor, Chief Jason, all of his folks, they need to be part of a supportive community right now. At Bird Middle School, one says Tom Hoffman. And at Walter High School, Lindsay Reicheld, Rich Sturgis, and Mike Donahue were part of the, um, advisory community throughout the summer. There were advisory committees at all of the buildings, and we're familiar with the teachers of all of them. These are just a few of the amazing efforts that are going on, thanks to the Walpole Public Schools faculty and professors. If you're looking for more examples, the Walpole Public Schools Facebook page, its private sites are also great sources. So tonight, our message to all of the faculty is, thank you very, very much for their efforts over the past. Is anybody on the committee with anything they want to add tonight?
Um, we just got a text that they can't hear us on TV.
So they're gonna, they're just gonna work on it right now.
Okay.
Hold on, teachers, one second. How about Jen, are they able to hear me if I'm talking?
Are they able to hear?
Me? Or is it, let's see if it's a, if it's a mic issue.
All right, Bridget, why don't you say something again?
Testing, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three.
I'll let you know.
All right. They can hear, they can hear me perfectly. You wanna switch mics, Nancy? It's a mic issue. It's your microphone. All right, I think we found the glitch. Kristin, Kristin got the light, no.
Wow, here's really push this far away then.
Mark, can I get a mic right now?
I can hear Mark just fine. Yes, sure. So we're having little technical issues with the microphone, so Walpole cables in the process of just hooking up Nancy Galvin. We need to make sure that we're here.
In general, they said, talk closer to your microphone and talk louder.
Okay.
Can you, uh, redo a test, one, two, three, let's see.
Four, six. Anybody, anybody on the table?
Wait for the text to come through.
It would hurt, yeah. I haven't heard that yet, so.
What do you think, Patrick? I just had a second.
Yep, so there must be a little bit of a delay.
Can you hear me? I'm talking loud.
That's right.
All right, now?
Try, try, um, maybe you need to switch, you wanna switch my mic with, um, because Kristin has a really good mic.
Sing us a song, Kristin.
We can hear Kristin.
Switching to different component.
Or we can switch on Kristin's mic too. It's all right, I need a little break. Just a little one.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I'm trying to get in, making a little listening audience, let us know if you can hear this, the different technology switch.
We're hoping this works. Will anybody else come through here?
All right.
Because we're asking students to hear, but we have a lot of, I think it's really difficult to switch.
They said it's a little better.
A little?
Kristin, how about your mic? You seem to echo a lot.
I don't know, I don't think this just seems really, and. The man said barely, I mean, as to me or to Nancy, that she couldn't hear.
That would probably be to you. Can hear who? Can he hear Kristin? Mike, can you hear Kristin? Yes, he can, he can hear you very clearly.
I'm happy to give out my mic if it's working.
What?
Bridget, not very clearly, but we can hear her.
Okay. I think you can hear me, I'm clear because I have the computer in front of me, so if the.
Now I can't hear you. Now I can hear you.
Now you can hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
You're hearing Bridget very clearly, not me very well, or any of you.
Okay.
I think the only thing that people can hear on Zoom is what your mic's picking up, right?
Right, for me, but then I know that Patrick has it on ca- uh, cable and on YouTube, so.
How about me? Can anyone hear mine? They can hear me, Nancy, why don't you just switch these up?
Oh, we could do that, Nancy, you wanna switch so you can recognize?
I know.
I know, that's the only problem, I'd have to wipe it down.
Mine is working, so I'd like to switch with you and you sit here. Oh, yeah, we're not.
All right, we got it, two more minutes, we're getting it, we're getting there.
She doesn't understand, I can hear Bridget, not really anyone else.
Now, people who are looking at this on different platforms, hi, guys.
I don't know, thank you.
All right, try it now, Nancy.
People who are listening at home, this is a completely different microphone, can you please let, say it again? Much better? Okay, can somebody at home let us know now whether or not you can hear from this microphone? That would be helpful.
Should I redo the whole teacher thing?
I know.
What, wanna do it?
Yeah, well, I think, I think.
It's just that we have eight o'clock as our, as our.
That's right, loud and clear, very clear.
Okay.
Okay, we can just summarize. This evening, we intend to recognize, do two recognitions. The first one is the, the number of teachers and faculty members who are going above and beyond. These really are extraordinary times, and the ability to keep our school open relies on the tremendous cooperation from everyone involved. At previous points, we have publicly thanked the administrators, the advisory teams at each school, the WTA, the nurses, the custodians, and the Walpole Health Department, among others. But we're also getting tremendous cooperation from many other people. Tonight, we want to thank the many teachers who are going above and beyond to make this twenty-one, twenty twenty-one school year a wonderful one despite the many changes. As a school committee, we want to thank you all and want to highlight just a few examples tonight. At the elementary school, the digital learning coaches and media technicians have been a tremendous support. Some examples are all of the Chromebook and charger distribution, problems and solutions around tech connectivity, Google links, login credentials, and beyond. They've offered office hours for fellow staff members to answer questions for technology and remote instructional techniques. They've created a kindergarten orientation website, provided drop-in PD for teachers to help them set up Google Classroom, learn new instructional techniques, and present information for open houses, open house websites. They've provided specialized professional development around access to the latest tools and platforms to engage students, and they've been constantly available, calm, kind, and caring. We would like to thank Nancy Carroll and Kristen Moses at Boydin School, Kimberly Farley at Elm Street School, Jed Stefanowitz at Oppost Road, and Karen Wolf at Fisher School. At Johnson, two math teachers and the reading specialists are collaborating on a new instructional approach designed to maximize the engagement of students, whether they are learning in person or from home. We want to thank Allison O'Hara, Nicole DeCastro, and Megan Bramwell for extending themselves by trying to learn something brand new in a time when there's an awful lot of other things already on their plate. At Bird Middle School, the health teacher extended himself greatly by reaching out to all of his colleagues, encouraging them to take the time to care for themselves by saying, quote, "It's easy to focus on the negative because there are a lot of negative things happening now, and we need to pay attention and do what we can to help move things in a more positive, caring, and loving direction." His effort was really well appreciated, and drew many notes of appreciation, all of which illustrate the need to be part of a supportive community right now. And at Walpole High School, we want to recognize Lindsay, Lindsay Reicheld, Rich Sturgis, and Mike Donahue for their participation in the advisory committee throughout the entire summer. Each of the schools had advisory committees like this, and we're very, very appreciative of the work that the teachers and all the other members have contributed. These are just a few of the amazing efforts that we're going to, that are going on right now, and thanks to the Walpole Public Schools faculty every day. If you're looking for more examples, the Walpole Public Schools Facebook page and Twitter account are also great sources. So tonight, our message to all of the faculty is, thank you very, very much, your extraordinary efforts are recognized. Anybody else want to comment?
I just wanted to quickly just say thank you to everybody here, all the staff, and the staff at home too, if you're watching. It's a tremendous amount of work, hard work and effort to teach hybrid, teach remote, teaching cohorts. It's, it's just a different form, they're, they're really, they learn, they unlearn, and then they learn again. And, and they're trying to organize and manage and learn technology and continue with their best practice, and I think, what they're really trying to do, it's, it's nothing short of amazing, so I appreciate all your hard work and efforts. I know this is not easy, but you know, you come in, you have a positive attitude, you're hard on yourselves, and you want these students to continue to progress and, and keep up with curriculum, and also looking at their social emotional learning, and engaging them, so nothing short of tremendous, so thank you for your hard work.
Great, that gets us to the next recognition, which is the John D. Langley Foundation. Dr. Goff?
Yes, the John D. Langley Foundation, what this does is it provides funds for extracurricular and enrichment opportunities for children and teens. The foundation grants are funded solely through donations and fundraising events. The mission of the foundation is to provide remedial and enrichment opportunities to children in need. Educators, social workers, and other people may make application, and it's for grant money. Grants are available for school-aged children between the grades of kindergarten through high school. Grants are awarded on the basis that the activity will enrich the child, and that is not, that is not currently available through the school curriculum. What this foundation did, they granted all four Walpole Elementary Schools five thousand dollars each for the purchase of books for each classroom. The books encompass themes of resilience, perseverance, equity, and kindness to enhance classroom libraries. We are truly grateful to the Langley Foundation for this generous donation, and I just firstly say, I've worked with the Langley Foundation before, when I was at Bird Middle School, and they are absolutely a tremendous foundation, and we thank them for their generosity and support.
Thank you, Dr. Goff. I'd just also like to add that I had the pleasure of being on the school committee when John Langley was our student rep. And, um, talk about a fantastic individual. He, um, we're about to hear from another fantastic high school student in just a moment, but, um, I, I can't say enough about the way John contributed to the Walpole Public Schools as a student, as a student athlete, and as a tremendously solid community member who unfortunately died during college. And, um, his mom and dad still live in Walpole, his two sisters still live in Walpole, and if I'm not mistaken, he, he has, I believe, nieces, um, but the next generation of the Langley family is attending school now, and, um, I've always felt that if our kids could be half the man that John was, they'd be really in good shape, so thank you to the Langley Foundation. I know you had a chance to know John as well, Bill.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm really excited to recognize the Walpole Foundation, and after a true group, known for community, I met John behind, I'm a summer sports president here, behind Perdil School, with the captain's practices for soccer, and one year, he was back in the morning, he would sneak me out, and be present, remember, he would kind of look at us. The ones who are very, really, uh, the type of manager was, I think it's one of them, who are kind of, yeah, they're really, the website goes into paid details, his life was towards town, but, uh, the Langley Foundation demanded some, uh, things, uh, for, for people to, and, uh, like, like, uh, they're, they're, uh, foundation practices, allowing students to be, to be on the access, uh, to access all those, uh, to, again, probably all the, all the, uh, building, and, and, uh, allowing, especially children to partake in the great enriching things of childhood, which is, he was a very, he was a rich man in terms of his, you know, friends he had, and the way he lived his life, so this, this foundation is, is kind of quiet, I think, in our community, and does just tremendous work, or a tremendous guy, I'm quite grateful, uh, we recognize him tonight, thank you.
Very well said, Bill, so thank you very much to the Langley family. Okay, that gets us to you, Brendan, thank you for being patient. We have Brendan Maloney, our high school student rep, giving a report from Walpole High School. The floor is yours, Brendan.
Never, never. All right, perfect. Uh, good evening, I'm Brendan Maloney, and I'm a senior at Walpole High School. Uh, week four of hybrid learning is almost in the books, Cohort B will be in school tomorrow, while Cohort A is, uh, remote. Due to last night's storm, no students at the high school were marked absent because of intermittent power outages and trees and branches down all across the town. Um, overall, hybrid learning is working out pretty well so far. Remotely, students are logging onto class on time, and teachers are meeting with students to assign and discuss work. And in school, teachers are teaching similarly to how they would have taught before, but the major difference is the pace of the classes. Uh, teachers have been going through a lot of material in their classes, uh, of all levels to make up for only having these classes, uh, up until the first, the end of the first semester. Uh, the high school hosted a virtual back-to-school night last Thursday, which allowed parents to join Google meets, uh, with their children's teachers so they could hear about what they were learning in class. Uh, picture day for high school students, uh, will be tomorrow for Cohort B, and Monday the twelfth for Cohort A. Uh, last Saturday, the high school hosted the SAT successfully with a limited capacity of students. Uh, additionally, Walpole High School will be hosting the PSAT for juniors on Saturday the seventeenth of October, and students must sign up for this ahead of time using the link from Mr. Ambush's email. And overall, faculty at all levels have done an amazing job to make this year as normal as possible. Uh, last Tuesday, the Commission on Renaming for the Walpole mascot met to discuss the process of renaming the mascot. We decided that a good start would be sending out a survey to obtain ideas for a new mascot name, and that was sent out last Friday to residents, students and families, faculty, and more, uh, in an effort to collect a plethora of different responses. Uh, once the responses are collected from the survey on October thirty-first, the Commission will meet again to narrow down the name list to about five or six, and then once those names are approved by school committee, they will be sent out, uh, through a ballot to middle and high school students, as well as high school faculty and varsity coaches, and the name with the most votes will be adopted as the new mascot, and then there will be a logo design process following that. Uh, as for sports at the Wal- at Walpole High School, uh, sports have begun with varying regulations depending on the sport. Uh, before each practice and game, athletes must scan a QR code and take a symptom checking survey before they practice or, uh, plan a game. Uh, also, the Bay State League has split, uh, into pods for contact purposes, uh, meaning that the teams in each pod will only play teams within that pod. Um, for example, Walpole is in a pod with Braintree running from Milton. Uh, the records for the sports teams in the fall are as follows: field hockey is one and oh, boys' soccer is oh and one, girls' soccer is one and oh, golf is two and two, swimming is oh and one. Uh, boys' and girls' soccer, as well as boys' cross country, competed against Milton today. Uh, swimming matched up against Ursuline at three PM, and yesterday, boys' golf and girls' cross country competed against Milton. Uh, but although there are many restrictions to sports, um, it, there's been a positive response overall so far to how they've been going. Uh, as for clubs at the high school, uh, all clubs have begun their meetings, uh, or matches, depending on the club, virtually. Uh, the photography club held their first meeting this past Monday, and this past weekend, the fishing debate team had their first competition, and they had many students place highly in various categories. Uh, for best buddies, we had a first chapter meeting on Monday where we discussed the friendship walk and plans for the year. Uh, normally, we do the friendship walk at McQuay Stadium in Rhode Island, but this year, uh, the walk was turned virtual, but following approval from administration, as a chapter, we decided that we would try to have it, um, in person, socially distant with masks on, on October thirty-first. We're holding it on the track, and we'll have chapter members who are registered for the friendship walk come in, wave, and do their walk to promote inclusion. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
As always, Brendan, you give a very thorough report, and we look forward to being able to see you in person at some point this year, um, but stay in touch. Any questions or comments for Brendan?
Can we just let the staff know that are still on the Zoom call that if they want to go off, they can, if they have a busy day tomorrow, some of that couple of the staff, they still, so staff, I know, I know it's hard to hear, but, um, i- if you need to log off, we completely understand, and if you want to stay on, please do so.
Okay, that gets us to eight o'clock, and that means we're going to begin the, um, item on our agenda about the middle school building project. Dr. Goff?
All right, I'll just share my screen.
Sorry, Bridget, can I just interrupt? Um, the teachers that were from Johnson, are they not going to present?
Oh, sure, um, I'm sorry, we're just trying to, sure, we would love for them to present.
I'm very sorry, yeah. So just really quickly, thank you, I, I apologize for interjecting, um, uh, thank you to the committee for recognizing our teachers tonight, I, I know that it's, uh, I shared the sentiment with the rest of the principals that they are doing wonderful work across the district. Um, this year, we were tasked with, or at least I tasked myself with, thinking creatively, innovatively, and I wanted, uh, them to really find ways to, to not just try to jam a square peg into a round hole, but to find. but to find new and creative ways of teaching. So, I just wanted to be able to share with the committee and the community an example of some of the teaching that's going on at Johnson right now. So, I've asked these fine educators to join us tonight to share a little bit about what they're doing with the modern classroom approach. So, who would like to start off? Go ahead, Allison, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I just want to thank all of you for your support, especially Steve and Connor at the school. Without their support and their calm demeanor, I don't know that we would be...
I think we're losing you, Allison.
We are losing Allison.
...in the year. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I just was amazed at the progress that they were making, how quickly they're moving along in the curriculum. And the quality of the work is better. So, it's pretty amazing. I think that the game changer is the flipped classroom or the modern classroom that Steve asked us to look into. And so, what's happening is we're creating lessons and using technology. Like, I'd never even heard of some of these things, you know, Flipgrid and Screencastify. I've had to learn right along with my students. So, I've let go of that role where I'm standing in front of the class and teaching, and I'm now creating lessons. They're learning at home, and then they're coming to school, and they're applying that new knowledge to project-based assessments. I'm able to just walk around the room there. If they need help, I'm there to help them. It's more one-on-one, I'm building better and stronger relationships with them as individuals. I mean, I could go on and on. I was really nervous about the public speaking class because standing in front of the room with a mask on, I just thought, how are we going to do this? And then I realized that they could do it on Flipgrid. They're doing their speeches on Flipgrid. They're doing them over and over again, practicing and practicing using their hand gestures and their eye contact and their vocal variety. So, they're really coming out so much better than they would have if they were just practicing once or twice the night before their speech in front of the class. They want their videos to be perfect. So, they're coming out great. Just yesterday, I discovered a tool where I can give them feedback through Google after I watched their Flipgrid video. And I saw this little button, I pressed it, and I was like, whoa! I can talk to them immediately and give them this feedback. So, the technology has been very exciting for an old teacher like me after 31 years on really stretching and learning. And it's been just so positive. And I don't know, I'm excited. I ran into Steve's office so excited the other day. So, there are definitely a lot of positives. And also, now, we're running out of time. I can go on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And also, to the school committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent, all of you, thank you. The support is what's getting us through. Thanks.
Megan and Nicole are working together as part of the Math Department and adopting a similar approach. I don't know who would like to talk next. Good, Megan.
Okay, so, I'm just going to talk about the different checks for mastery that we have. And I'm also just going to talk about how it's more self-paced in terms of our instruction. So, for each lesson, at the end of each lesson, there's some kind of a mastery check. So, it's usually a mini-check for understanding. And myself, Nicole, and Allison, we've done these in the form of either a Google form or there are questions that are embedded into a video that are using N-Puzzle or a similar app. The mastery checks, they're brief, they're usually between four or five questions that are based upon that day's lesson. And the goal is for students to score an 80% mark higher in order to demonstrate competency. If students don't demonstrate competency, then what we do is we have a one-on-one intervention with those students. It can be the classroom teacher or our co-teacher in some cases, where we really sit down together with those students to discuss difficulties that they had. We clarify any misconceptions, and we work together to complete some additional practice problems.
Megan, just speak up just a little bit louder.
Better? Okay. So, once the students have met with us to do some remediation, there's a mastery check retry where the students are able to get kind of a second attempt to improve their score, which is really beneficial because a lot of the time, kids may make careless mistakes or they thought they understood something. So, once we have that one-on-one time to really explain the material better, they really feel more confident, and majority of the time, the retrys, the performance is much better. This modern classroom approach, it's more self-paced. So, instead of being given an entire unit, like the traditional modern classroom, I know we've adapted it a little differently where we're providing the students access to one lesson at a time versus the entire unit. The lessons do have due dates, they're usually two or three days away, which having those due dates allows the students to work at their own pace during that class time itself without having that added pressure of keeping up with the whole class. The due dates also ensure that students are progressing through the lessons with a certain goal so that we're still on our timeframe for our common assessments that we have. And there's also various extension and enrichment activities that are provided to differentiate our instruction, and it helps us meet the diverse needs of all of our students. So, overall, I definitely love this modern classroom approach. It's something that I definitely want to adapt through the years to come, not just during this COVID time. I think it's really beneficial, and I have nothing but positives to say about it.
Thank you, Megan.
And just to add a few more successes that we've basically... Something that I've been seeing this year is that I am able to be more flexible with how I spend my time in my classroom. I feel that I'm making more of an impact daily where they have access to a video and guided notes. I can spend my time one-on-one with students or in a small group, and I'm also able to give equal attention to students at home because everyone is in a slightly different place. So, it's not me standing deliver at the front. Everyone's in a different place, so I can help where is needed, which I feel like I'm making... I have those like aha moments with more kids. Like, even today, like this one, he's like, "I got an 83!", and I was like, "Yes!" And he's one of the, you know, a little more struggling learners. So, it was like fantastic to see. And I feel like because we've been able to have that one-on-one time so much that I'm having more of those successful moments with my students. And also, the ease of access of instruction from school and at home has been fantastic. We have a similar routine in the sense of that there are certain steps we follow every day. So, it's seamless in the sense of, oh, it's an at-home day, I don't have to do anything. Like, they know what they have to do, they do the same thing in school in the sense of what they're accessing and when. And I think that'll be fantastic if there's ever a situation where we do have to go fully remote, that my classroom routines will not change. It'll be seamless in the sense that they know their expectations, they know how to use all the tools, and my instruction will just be seamless with that, which I think is a fantastic advantage to what we've been doing with the modern classrooms.
Well, thank you to the three of you. You can see your energy and enthusiasm shining through. So, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And with that, Mrs. Galavan, can I move to the visioning statement?
That sounds wonderful. Thank you, Johnson teachers. And we are now going to talk about the middle school project, yes.
Thank you. So, I just let me try to get this maybe down to the bottom, which is in the... There we go. Thank you. Okay, so, what we did is that the middle school staff, we held this series of visioning sessions with David Stevens, and he's the educational programmer for New Vista Design and who worked closely with Tim Bonifante, who I believe is on here now, and Brian Jarvis. They're both from the Compass Project Management Team and also Chris Blossom from Tap A Architects. So, thank you, guys. So, what we want to do tonight is share with you some highlights from the educational visioning process that David's been facilitating with us in the district during this MSBA feasibility plan. And what it does is it helps to communicate and establish a clear vision and architectural priorities that are detailed in our education plan. Our education plan is about a 60-plus-page plan. That describes where we are now and where we want to go in 50-plus years into the future. Spaces that really enable us to be flexible and adaptable. So, what we did is we engaged with administration, with staff, with school committee as well. And we held a meeting and developed some educational priorities. And then we connected them...
...related to the ideas and design about what is possible. And this is the part where I'm going to share some ideas that came out of the visioning session. And then those of you who are at home, we ask you to give feedback and also school committee members as well. So, you will need a phone or a computer at this time. And what we do is we use the platform that's in here. And I'll mention this later in the chat to this part. And it will allow you all at home and all the school committee to interact with the slides and let us know what you would like to see in either a renovated or new school. And what we do, and like I said, I'll mention this later when we get closer, is that we go to this, and this will be on every single screen, every single slide. We go to menti.com, M-B-N-T-I dot com. And there'll be a six-digit code that I will read to you. So, what we do is we connect these ideas. And last week, we actually, and I talked about piece bases and then also adjacent diagram. And all of this, by the way, David's, and our visioning session that we have with the community, it's available on the project website. And I'll put that at the end. And you can find the Walpole Public Schools website because we want to continue to have these ongoing conversations where we want your feedback as we go through the process. So, what we do is we build upon our district agenda. The MSBA does have a template, but they want to see our vision, they want to see our vibe, and they want to see creativity and utilize it as a basis. And just to let everybody know, any renovated or new MSBA, they'll have certain categories, so to speak. They'll all have, as you can see, they'll all be ABA compliant. They have the age access systems, they have attentive security, they have flexible classrooms, small rooms, large rooms. They have integrated special education, enrichment, and arts that are really accessible. It comes with new furniture and technology that's, as we call it, people with this technology, very, 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 and they will always those sustainable. The cost holds, you know, upfront and long-term, the cost of maintaining the building, and also improved acoustics, and we have indoor audio connections. So, the use for the MSBA template is thoughtful and it's cost-effective. We talk about being practical, it's not trendy. And we really use every single square inch. And think of multiple spaces, think of the dable spaces, and ensure that schools and schools and schools to the community use the force 21st century teaching and learning. We talked a lot about what the future of the schools would look like, and it would be that, you know, of course, there's tasks and our four subjects areas, social, emotional, learning, and then also to develop our learners to receive about the critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and also citizenship.
Bridget, can I try to...
Sure. I can hear the mic from closer there, so I think it's very, it doesn't let it echo. It won't let it go.
Let's try that, see if that works. And then we also talk about large spaces and small spaces as well. So, when you're looking at educational delivery... Look at what it was education in the past, but what we want education to be. So, we really want to be student-centric, student-focused. We talk a lot about active learning and these flexible learning environments where students are engaged. We're a one-to-one district with these technology environments where they can take their technology or their equipment to different lookings of the building. We could talk a lot about collaboration and teaming and project-based learning, where it's authentic learning, where it's engaged learning, and like I mentioned before, we're looking at this student-centric learning. So, one of the first tasks is to create a set of future-ready learning goals for the district. And what goals are most important to the district. So, as you can see here, the five Cs are included, that critical thinking and problem solving, the collaboration and communication, our creativity, and then of course, our citizenship and global awareness, which aligns directly to our strategic plan. We also talked a lot about learning mindset. What does that mean? It means to take risks. To be self-directed. To develop resilience and really have the skills of learning how to learn.
Bridget, I don't know what to tell you, but they're saying it's worse now. And then you're repeating.
Patrick, can you see?
Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from.
Is it a function of Zoom?
All right, how about that if I get rid of the mic?
All right, testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
All right, that sounds better.
Okay. So, I'm going to get them in.
There we go. So, we talked about digital learning, and we also talked about mastery of content. And again, social, emotional, and so we looked at all of these future-ready goals and created the set of the goals that were important to our district. So, what I want to do in the next just two slides is highlight the priorities that we established during the visioning process. And I want to share them with you. And then you're going, I'm going to ask you to, we're going to ask you to share your priorities. So, first and foremost, we looked at a supportive and innovative curriculum programming that was very important to the visioning team of educators. What was also important was the community use and access. So, what does that mean? Well, that means we think about the building as a community resource. How we open the school after school, evenings, and weekends. That was important to the visioning group. We talked about comfortable classrooms, flexible classrooms, adaptive classrooms. Grade-level neighborhoods, this was a big one, very important to the middle school level, to have these grade-level communities where students are able to share specific teachers, where they know their students, where the students feel a sense of belonging and ownership. Not having split teams, for those who might not be familiar with the middle school, for example. Depending on the enrollment of the year, that particular year, you may have a sixth-grade team, students on a six, seven, seven, eight, and eight. So, because of the courses that are offered, some students may be placed or have teachers on multiple teams. Something like this is what we envisioned, is to have these grade-level neighborhood teams. Safety and security was important. Flexible and multiple spaces, to have these collaborative spaces, and then also some quiet spaces where students can take time to reflect and then you work alone. We talked a lot about being accessible, sustainability was important. We wanted this to last and adapt through the times. Special education, we talked about that being inclusive, being an integral part of classroom space. Of course, our phys ed and fitness. Our science spaces extremely important to us. We talked a lot about STEM and STEAM, our science, technology, engineering, arts, math. And then display areas to really exhibit our work. And then again, having that maker space, a project-based learning where students can have some authentic learning, have choice. So, what we want to ask is what are your top priorities? So, what I'd like you to do is, this is a way to check in and get feedback for those that want to provide feedback at this point. So, you will need your phone or your computer, but your phone is probably the easiest. So, what you'll do is you'll go to www... And it's menti, M-E-N-T-I dot com. And you use the code, you enter the code, 653851. Again, that's 653851. And you'll see that always at the top of the screen as we, as we slide. And you'll see that always at the top of the screen as we, as we slide through. So this one just asks, you'll be selecting pretty soon for some design things of different schools. But the first one is to ask, when we think about education priorities, what comes to mind? What do you want to make sure we have for our building and our building supports in terms of education? And what programs do we want our children to have? What do we want as an approach to teaching and learning? So I'll give people a couple of minutes. So we have, for example, inclusion coming up. Team taught instruction coming up. Collaboration, yes, S H P. Variety. Hands-on science, real life, yes, tying in, making it authentic. Small class size, so that's the small school field. Yes, the music space. Focusing on the whole child, so academic, social, emotional, physical needs. Our STEM and spaces that inspire learning and creativity. So for the next part, what are your architectural priorities? So what is important to you in the terms of architecture? About a new or renovated middle school? What types of designs are important to you? Natural light, that always seems to be the first thing that pops up. Neighborhoods, especially at a middle school. Inviting spaces. Practice rooms, right down the middle, schools do not have practice rooms. So a lot of open, see a lot of open floor plans, inviting spaces. Flexibility, yes, safety. Natural light, a lot of windows with natural light. Let's send a gym near a sports field. And this will go on. And again, we'll collect these, so we may actually put in a minute. We don't see them right on the screen. We'll have them and we'll save them for the important feedback. And last one is what are your top community priorities? So as you think about a resource for the community, what are the things that are most important to you? To have a gym, maybe a gym that the community can use. It's a performance, not a tournament, a performance space. And all these can be both public and private zones that you can close them off so we can make people feel safe. Space for the community to come together. Yes, an outdoor space. So really having a place where the community can gather, can celebrate, continue to take pride in their children. Okay, so these are some design patterns. When we talk about design patterns, there are really ways that we approach designing for the schools. So we want you to, it's a way to think outside the box, so to speak, as David mentioned. So what you see in the bottom of the screen, you see a heart, meaning like you really love this design pattern. You have a thumbs up, I like it, thumbs down, does not interest me. And the question mark is really, you know what, I'm not sure. It's something that either I need to learn more about or, you know, I really have no idea what this is. So let's look at this example, the first one. So the first design pattern is classroom neighborhoods. So we have no, it's no more square footage, so to speak. But this is really a neighborhood. Because we have a team room, as you can see. We have windows that look out on the team room. We have a teacher planning area, special ed classrooms that are integrated. Neighborhood that's really, as we talked about in the visioning session, a neighborhood that is more than the sum of its parts. And it's really become a small learning community that makes the school actually feel smaller. Next one is agile classrooms. So that's natural light, flexible furniture. You can see that there, you might have adjustable desks on your storage. The one on the right-hand side, those are removable walls that are between two classrooms. So you can close it, it's really solid, but then you can open it and it gives you more flexibility. Breakout spaces. So this could be a space even within a classroom, as you see on the right. Again, you see those movable walls. And then you kind of have some nooks, so to speak, for students to either work alone or work in a small group. You could provide testing interventions, some type of enrichment. Clusters of learning. If you look at this on the right-hand side, you can see there's a gym, there's a cat cafeteria. It's more of a community center. And that's closed off to the academic neighborhoods. So you can use it on the weekends, at night. And in the academic neighborhoods could contain core subject areas. You can have meeting space, you can have project-based labs in this area on the left-hand side. Community access. Again, a gym, a kitchen, auditorium, you might have music, you might have a video lab. So you have that and then the wing is closed off to the academic if you're going to knock this out on weekends or evenings. Safety and security. So you can observe us coming into your buildings. Drop off, maybe people can drop things off without fully entering the building. You can see that it is, it looks like there's a door. And then there's that double door to provide extra security, good visual access throughout the entire school. Welcoming environment. I would say you can tell a lot about the school when you first walk into the building. So it doesn't feel welcoming, there are areas that you can display student work. Outside, if you notice on the left-hand side, there's an overhang for students that maybe can wave during inclement weather. Sustainability, so looking at those measures within the team. Do you have examples of different schools? Natural light, always seems to be a big one. And there was on the left, a bar called light shelves. And they reflect the lights off the ceilings, so all the classrooms may have sensors. Indoor/outdoor connection. So you can see on the left, it's obviously, it's a major space, but then there's a garage door to the outside, so students can extend their learning. We're working on something like, you know, middle school robotics and being able to take that and transition to the high school. Courtyard on the right can extend to cafeteria. Outdoor learning spaces, so on the left, there's an outdoor classroom. There's also one, I believe, when some of us went to visit Beverly Middle School. They have this more kind of like an amphitheater feel. Students could eat lunch outside and then you could also have performance venues. You could hold classrooms outdoors. And the one on the right provides shelter.
Richard, there's a question from home. Should you repeat the website and the code? Or is that part of it?
Yep, no, www dot, and it's Mentee, M-E-N-T-I dot com. And then the code is up there, six, five, three, eight, five, one. This is a cafe forum, so the cat cafeteria is like a multipurpose room. So it would be, could be a performance area, large group meetings. Ubiquitous technology. So again, that's where you need it, when you need it. And since we are a one-to-one district, it's being able to have mobile technology and moving to various rooms. You can see there's a studio on the left in a smaller breakout room, which connects to a larger room. Our media center, what is commonly known now as your learning commons, this is really the hub of many schools. It can provide a maker space, or we know as a project-based learning lab, or a curriculum integration, audio/video production. Maybe they extend up the side. We have a news team that both Byrd and Johnson, so a robotic space for those students. Really to, by the way, to extend our learning environment. Again, maker spaces, which are also known as project-based labs and/or interdisciplinary labs. The one on the left is the one we visited at Beverly Middle School. Really having accessibility from your classrooms. And it's a way for students to be engaged and take ownership of their learning. So you have maker spaces, but then you can also have maker classrooms. So you can think of it as a way that they can continue to work in their classroom, have lots of storage. You can see these whiteboard spaces. Some of them have whiteboards that go all the way, the whole wall is a whiteboard. Sinks, technology, unit furniture. Adaptable science labs. So in the perimeter, what you would do is you would have all your stations at the perimeter. So you can move around the middle of the room and the students are not locked in, to create more flexibility in your labs. Extended learning spaces. So these are, we call them in-between spaces, so to speak. So it could be in the hallway. Side of this one on the left is West Bridgewater. And it is a cyber cafe where students can go to do some independent work. This one's a little bit different, it's distributed dining.
Did you ever have a trouble hearing everything you're trying to say? Like for the last couple of minutes, I'm getting, we can't hear anything.
Let me turn it off.
You turned your microphone off.
All right, I'll keep going. At least I can see them.
Yeah, I can.
Distributed dining, this is interesting. It's a large dining area and we're looking at, it really has a main cafeteria and then this small distributed cafeteria that are quieter. Effective storage. So to recognize materials for storage, for project-based learning. Or the right one is at Beverly Middle School. Where students seem to carry everything around. So it's just basically to fit maybe the technology, something small. Maximize, again, it's all about maximizing your space. And we're also to have professional work areas. So teachers can collaborate and work. Teachers, the reason that a lot of schools have this is teachers are no longer tied to their desks. So it allows teachers a place to collaborate, a place for them to go, a wide place for them to go as well. And it allows also, if they're not tied to their desk, allows for better utilization of their classrooms. Enrichment spaces, so there's your PE and music and art. Varied performance venues. So these are different areas where performances can happen. Community access. And again, these are spaces where you'd be able to rent and make some revenue that way. I think the left is almost like a type of a block box theater. And on the right is your larger auditorium. And then finally, display and exhibition. So just these open areas where students can show off their work. So what you're going to do is on your phones. Take a look and, I think it allows you three options. Which design patterns do you think are most relevant and exciting for either renovated or new local middle school? So you're able to enter three. So we'll take a couple of minutes and we can do that now. So far, what's popping up, if I'm trying to do this in small print. Classroom neighborhoods, it's, 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 it looks like it's a priority. Community access, natural light. Okay, community neighborhoods, community access, natural light, technology. There we go. Natural classrooms. Classroom neighborhoods. So we'll save this, we'll save, we'll save this. So we can take some of the, take this feedback and it also helps us when we're developing our educational plan. Are there any other design patterns or features that are important to you? That maybe wasn't mentioned in these scenarios? Anything we're leaving out? And we'll talk a little bit about this. We've talked about it at prior, previous school committee meetings that we're involved right now in the educational program discussion. We're going to talk a little bit about consolidation tonight. That's going to be ongoing for the next several weeks. We're going to continue that discussion. And then we're also going to have another community forum and we'll be able to get that date out as well. This is the slide I wanted you to look at. You can visit the project's website. It's on the local public schools website. You can visit also the MSBA website if you ever want to look up or have a question about the different phases that we're in. And if you have a question or you want to comment on any of these designs, on how you envision our schools, our middle schools, please comment. And if you also have an opinion or some feedback about consolidation, we want to hear that too, because that's what we're going to be talking a little bit about now. But we really need to hear that feedback, that's important. And we're going to be continuing to talk about that in the weeks to come. Move to consolidation.
Okay, before I go on and sort of bring up the next topic, I just want to thank Dr. Goff for flexibility, sense of humor, and perseverance. She has been living this project. There's an awful lot of work that goes on. And I know that that presentation was not perfect, but I appreciate the fact.
We're living in imperfect times.
That's right. She's leading by example and I appreciate that. So hopefully, the public can hear this part of it as well. But within this, this project, I just want to go back a few steps. The next few months are critical. By Thanksgiving time, we're going to have identified about seven or eight different options that need to be evaluated. Because the MSBA process requires us to look at renovating, building new. But WOPO has the additional situation of needing to look into, do we want to continue with the structure that we have right now? Here we have two middle schools, or do we want to consolidate? And that's an important conversation for us to begin to discuss. And we're going to bring up a little bit of this tonight. Likely, the school committee will be making a decision before the end of this calendar year. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Yes.
So we want to engage the community in this discussion about the potential for consolidation. We're seeking, actively seeking input. And the easiest way for anyone to do that is what Dr. Goff was just talking about. Send, send a comment through the middle school project component that is found on the Walpole Public Schools website. Just go to the main walpole.k12.mauus. You'll be able to find the middle school project. And if you have questions or thoughts, we are going to be collecting them there. First point that I want to make is that many of us are old enough that we did not go to middle school. We went to junior high school. And middle school is not the same as junior high school. And this mistaken language makes middle school educators today very uncomfortable. Because they've made a real effort to make middle school its own entity in and of itself. It's not trying to take kids who are 10, 11, 12, 13 years old and put them into a high school model. It is much more about the fact that these years are a tremendous time of growth for students, physically, emotionally, educationally, socially, and interpersonally. For one individual child, the growth is often immense. But for the group, the range is tremendous. And it's important to consider the potential that middle school experience can have on a child's development. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about is how do we get to this decision about whether or not it makes sense to combine our schools into two, sorry, combine our two schools into one? I think that, I think that, well, first of all, we have our two middle school principals here with us tonight. We also have a tremendous wealth in the fact that Dr. Goff was a middle school teacher and principal, Mr. Hahn was a middle school principal, and Mr. Frish was a middle school teacher. So our administrative staff has, has a pretty good wealth of experience. I think between the seven of us and the people that are here via Zoom, in my opinion, I thought it might make sense to start by talking about not the school itself, but the experience of middle school. And what do we think makes a great middle school teacher, staff member, or administrator? And what do we think makes a great middle school climate? I know that I'm just throwing these ideas out there now. But I will start off by saying, I think that not every teacher is cut out to be a middle school teacher. I think you have to be a little crazy. I think you have to love that particular age. And you have to have a passion for the subject that you're trying to teach. I think it's a unique opportunity, but it's not for everybody. Do any of you guys have things to offer? Okay? No, I'm sorry, Carrie, I didn't see you. Yeah.
I will have, you know, having more than a decade of experience myself working in middle schools, I think the number one thing that makes a great middle school teacher is a sense of humor.
Yeah.
And willingness to build relationships with students. Because middle school students are at a point where they're trying to decide who they are. And they need a lot of support and nurturing and acceptance for the many, 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 many mistakes that they make at that time of life. And a chance to grow from those mistakes and learn from them. And I think an effective middle school understands that and really tries to facilitate those learning experiences for the students and recognize that so much of the learning that happens in middle school isn't necessarily tied to the curriculum. But that the curriculum and the extracurricular activities that are offered can and should provide opportunities for the students to grow into who they are and to figure out who they want to be and what they want to do. And so I think exploration is really, really important. Opportunities for exploration, opportunities to try new things, opportunities to build connections with peers and adults are really what middle school is all about and should be all about.
I just want to second everything that Carrie said. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's an, it's an interesting time for kids. I think it's a time where their parents are no longer involved in every social dynamic that happens in their lives. And they're trying to be their best selves. And sometimes their sense of humor is misunderstood and sometimes it's very hopeful. And I think that they are fascinated by some of the school topics at times. And then others, they're, they're just not able to engage. So I think, I think the challenges are immense. Do any of you faculty members have anything you might want to add?
I don't have anything.
Anybody on the Zoom there, Steve?
Well, I mean, it's a little hard to hear on Zoom. I think I was hearing concepts around community, sense of community and belonging and supporting the development of the whole child. Certainly, yes, adolescence is a unique time of life. And you know, as Nancy was talking about, the traditional junior high school model was really focused on just the academic subject. And, and, and you know, so you had hallways where the science department was and the math department was. And the buildings that we have currently were built for that type of model. We have done a lot of work, myself in the last couple of years, but these people long before me, in developing a team approach, a classroom neighborhood approach, to building a sense of community for our students. Kind of a school within a school field in terms of our team approach to, to learning. Where we have teachers who work together and collaborate and share with students that they work with together. So that those kids know that this is their learning family. It would be wonderful to have a building that would support and promote that. And it was built with that in mind. I've had the pleasure of working in those types of buildings prior to coming to Walpole. And I know that it just, it just really helps facilitate that sense of community and that sense of belonging for students in different parts of the building. And allows the staff to really engage that.
Thanks, Steve.
I think one of the things that Steve brought up, and it was mentioned before, in terms of being able to have, it's not just teams of students that are learning together, it's the teams of teachers who are consistent for all those students. And then, yes, they're focused on the curriculum, they're focused on the skills and what they're trying to learn, but they're also focused on the kids. These are kids, any teams that get a chance to really know a family. Because sometimes it does take more than just, you know, a couple of teachers and a kid to get things right. It takes five or six and the family and support staff as well to help the kid get the best education that you possibly can get them. And having one building where we'd be able to do that would be really great to consolidate some of the programs we have at different buildings now, where kids from other parts of town have to go all the way across town to get what they need. Whereas if we were together, you know, all their friends would still be there even though they need something that's a little different from their other friends. You know, yes, we do know that, you know, the teachers that are, middle school teachers are special. They have to, you know, enjoy some occasional chaos because that's what middle school can be sometimes. But they love the students. And you can see that every day in the walk-in halls and you're in the classes with, with the teachers and the students. Because, you know, I felt like, having worked in high schools for a long time, it was a place where you went to learn all the things you needed to know to be successful in college. But now that I've worked in a middle school and I have for the last few, as a student, belong somewhere, is it? Because we're from, it's also about having, learning a sense of self and having a middle school, one big one would be a real asset to help them find that place where they belong. And they could be the most successful self between the ages of 11 and 14.
Very well said, Ed. I think I would say that as a school committee, we have a sort of once-in-a-generation opportunity to affect the education of the kids in Walpole. And we obviously want to get it right. I think that the major element in the room is that some people feel that middle schools are places where too many students get bullied. And that a larger school would exacerbate that problem. Can some of you who work in middle schools talk about how, how the middle school concept has a, has a role in making sure that each student has a place that they feel they belong? And that it really has the possibility to develop a positive school culture if you, if you set up your school properly? Because I think people need reassurance that students are not going to fall through the cracks and/or become victims of bullies.
I'm just texting. So I can repeat that. So some people would say that obviously when you're bringing two, two middle schools together, you're having a larger school population, right? And sometimes people worry about bullying and students slipping through the cracks and not having this feeling of belonging. So if you could talk to, you know, with that, how do you maintain that concept in a larger building where students feel like they have a place and students feel like they have a sense of belonging and a part of a community?
Yeah, I think that, part of that, designing is such an important part of that in terms of creating that smaller school or the school field. And for our next day, the kind of a neat space for students and their team members would be a part of it together. Again, I came from a school of 800 students, which would be roughly the size of what we have currently with our population. The other middle school in town that I came from was over 11 hundred students. But we had houses or community areas and everything was very, very rare. The benefit as well, you know, personally, I wish I could say that bullying would never happen or that there wouldn't be, you know, conflict between peers. One of the benefits of having a larger school and having additional teams is that you then have more spaces and more movement opportunities. It could just act like a monitoring, another other teams for students to move to and kind of really manage social dynamics. So there's actually a benefit in that regard as well, of having a larger installed school. And it's a true success of the entire school.
As far as students involved, I'm impressed. The teachers meet in their teams, they have dedicated time every week, at least once or twice a cycle in our old schedule, in our current schedule, once a week on Wednesdays. When they meet and all they talk about is the students. You know, how are they doing in your class as opposed to mine? Who are the students that we have the most concern about? What are we going to do about that? Whether they need to be in touch with a counselor, whether they need to be in touch with home or any type of outside services. So the teaming is really one of the ways that can help prevent any students from falling through cracks. Because they're focused on their, let's say, 82, 180 kids as opposed to 120 or more, as it's a regular junior high school.
Ed, I don't think that the average person understands what a team means from a student point of view. Can you explain how, what, what you mean when you put kids on teams?
Can you explain how, some people might not understand what teaming is. Like what, can you explain what that means when you put students on a team? Like I was talking about sixth grade teams, I was talking about the split teams versus six, seven, eight.
So I was just going to say, as far as teaming, like right now, we do have some split teams based on the issue of the number of teams that we have in our students. But in the idea of this whole concept, that we would have individual teams that would not, where students could not cross over, they would have all their core concept classes taught by the same team members, you know, social studies, DLA, math science, foreign language, you name it. The core concept is the same group of teachers that they have on the same team. So like I say, a team of students works with the same team of teachers for the entire year. And that's, that's, that's the way they can get to know the kids very well. It's the way to build those relationships because these are the only teachers they see. And if Steve and I were teachers on the same team, those kids would know that he and I are going to be discussing, you know, you and in terms of how you're doing and what we can do to help if you're having any struggles.
And because the teams are interdisciplinary, where we have again, science, math, DLA, social studies, those teachers can also work together to co-plan activities and opportunities for the students. You can have team-based civics projects, for instance. I've, I've seen teams get together and they would read A Long Walk to Water and the social studies and the DLA teachers would work together. And then the students would work collaboratively on a civics project to bring, like for instance, they raised money to build a well for an actual African village. And so like there's an opportunity there for the teachers to work together and really develop something special and unique for the students who, who they share.
So one other thing that I wanted to talk about, maybe Bill, like when we were both at the, at the middle schools, in terms of enrichment activities, that sometimes when you have the, the two middle schools, like I might only have a few kids, so I couldn't run, I couldn't run the activity that students were really interested in. And Bill, you were with Johnson, I had a few, few students. But if we had them together, we would have been able to run that activity and again, create another opportunity for students to get together, to have some commonalities in terms of an after-school activity. And to be able to feel like just another, another case of having a sense of belonging.
Absolutely. The opportunity to share resources, whether that is, you know, human resources and personnel and what their skill sets are, or whether it's physical resources around the building, robot kits or computers or whatever it might be. Again, the consolidation of the buildings would allow for a more efficient, more effective sharing of resources.
And maybe a bit of efficiency too. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that companies will, they'll be looking at efficiency in terms of cost, correct? Looking at a consolidated middle school versus the cost for the, you know, for having two, two middle schools or renovating or renovation.
Yes, I think by November, we should have some information. Does that sound right, Mark? I think that that will help us to consider the educational value and the cost value before we have to take a vote on consolidating.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of categories that go into this.
Yeah. I think it makes sense to just close up this part of the discussion now by saying to people at home, we are interested in any questions you have, any comments that you have around the information that was presented about the building, but also about your thoughts around consolidation. You'll hear a lot more over the next two months. And I think that is enough for now. Unless anybody, Bill?
Just to have a little bit of the, the amount of chair, we mentioned this last week too. I think it was really illuminating what we heard from both the middle school principals as well as our colleague who works in one. So perhaps. So perhaps as we do our e-notes, we might expand the level of specificity for this part of the discussion. Because I think there was a lot of great things raised, so maybe have a more meaty summary in that portion. I, for the record, did go to the middle school and passed it inexplicably. But I think there was such great stuff raised that maybe we could get a little more of that into the wider circulation.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to continue to stretch ourselves to figure out the right way to communicate with the public. But, good point. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us back to our agenda item under new business, which is the technology report. Is Ann Orbin still awake? Or, let's see.
All right, Ann, do they have, put the lights back up. She should still be there, she can hear me. Steven, Ed, thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. We'll be talking again and again and again.
Okay, everybody, I appreciate our support this year.
Thank you.
Okay, Ann, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you also for recognizing the phenomenal work that our digital learning coaches and media technicians in elementary have been doing. They really are models of change agents, helping all of us really navigate this new learning environment. So tonight I'm here to give you an update on our technology in the district. It truly has been.
Ann, just speak up just a little bit, Ann, please.
Is that better?
Little bit more.
That better?
Good.
Okay. Is that all right?
I think they can hear you at home.
Okay, well, again, I started off by just acknowledging and thanking you for the recognition of our digital learning coaches and media techs who are the change agents helping all of us navigate this new learning environment. And I'm here tonight to give an update on the technology in the district. It has truly been the most remarkable startup of the school year from many perspectives, and particularly technology and digital learning perspectives for our teachers and our families as well. I'll start with some of the new acquisitions that were purchased to enable rich learning experiences for students in this new hybrid and remote learning environment. From an equipment point of view, we have ordered a number of Chromebooks, fourteen-hundred-and-fifty to be exact. They have not all arrived, but the ones that did arrive include the key three-hundred that we needed to get our middle school one-to-one program in a rolling pattern. We also had two-hundred Chromebooks that were returned by our seniors that we deployed out to the elementary schools. And then the balance of those were maintained at the high school to use as loaners and to repairs and replacements. The additional Chromebooks that are on order are a different model. It's an Acer model that we were able to procure at a significant reduce rate. But the backorder continues. Backorders are a global issue at this point. There is a global shortage. I don't have a specific date, but when they do arrive, there are two-hundred-and-fifty of a higher-end model Chromebook for teachers that will be distributed. And another nine-hundred that will go to one grade of the middle school kindergarten and grade one. We had, we've also purchased new iPads that were initially set up in our elementary K-M1 classes for center-based activities with the intended use that if and when preschool had to go into a remote situation, that they would be deployed there. And that's exactly where they are now with our preschool students. Surprising acquisition has been two-hundred document cameras that we ordered for staff that have just gone over phenomenally well. And we.
Ann, can't hear you, hold on.
They're also being used. Did I lose the connection?
Yep, you did. Go ahead, just wait for a little thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, I just summarized the document cameras. And they're also being used as webcams for teachers with desktops. And that's been a nice addition. Some of the product acquisitions that were purchased that digital learning coaches had access to during the summer, where they worked to set these products up and learn the products and develop staff training that they delivered at the start of school, included tools like EdPuzzle, LuZella, C-Star, Generation Genius. These are ongoing. The additional features that are rolling out frequently with our Google Suite and including Google Meet are also in a continuous learning pattern at college as these things come out. On our infrastructure end, we performed some additional maintenance on our Wi-Fi units to minimize any interference from any other devices and make them a more smooth connection. And we are in the process of adding an additional FiOS line for, to better distribute bandwidth between elementary and middle schools. And that will bring our total bandwidth up to three gig on bandwidth reports that we've been pulling, indicate that we'll certainly need a very healthy range bandwidth-wise based on. Our tech support, it has this, as I think we're all aware, that a very active start of the year with tech support calls. We've had over two-hundred home desk tickets just in the last month. Our digital learning coaches and media techs provide the first line of support in the buildings. And at the district level, the tech support specialists have just been running ragged, school to school, school to school, as well as our network admin and the application services and data specialists and myself. So we're handling more complex issues. And they have become more complex in some instances. We're deploying out some of the older laptops to help some of the connection issues that we've been seeing. And then we also have our student help desk at the high school, which is one student who started last year. And he's back on board with us one period a day. And repairing Chromebooks, he's developed a website that will, is developing a website where he's going to put some video tutorials up and other helpful tips for both students and staff. And I'd just like to end by acknowledging the technical issues with Google Meet. We have had some very rough weeks, unfortunately. We fully understand that this is the foundation of our hybrid and remote learning environment and is the most needed application to work and to work well. While we made every effort to prepare the devices, the staff, the backend, infrastructure, some issues were just simply out of our controls. Two separate updates to the Chrome operating system disrupted Google Meet's over a two-and-a-half week period to varying degrees. We worked feverishly to identify issues and put out various solutions. But until the root cause was identified and a fix installed by Google this past week, staff, students, families were completely frustrated and learning was disrupted. As of today, though, we can see much improved Google Meet experiences. We received positive feedback this week from many teachers and are continuing though to work with some other, some continued pockets of issues. As I mentioned, we're putting out desktops, we're putting out adapters and cables so they can connect to a more stable connection. Doing whatever it takes to make sure these teachers have the right tools in place. We truly appreciate the patience and resilience of staff, students, and families and courage and continued use of the help desk and support forums that we've brought to families and just to submit. They've been extremely helpful for us to target and result, get resolutions out to issues.
Thanks, Ann, I do appreciate the forward thinking of getting, like the document cameras you mentioned, the two-hundred document cameras for staff to be able to, you know, get the educational process up and running. And, you know, the additional FiOS line was huge to resubmit, but so, thank you for that. And then also just, yeah, you know, we've had, you know, I think every district has had glitches, you know, Google Meet, when everybody's on it at the same time. But I'm just amazed at how quickly digital learning coaches were able to get together that, that Wednesday, it was just a week before, correct? And able to really troubleshoot, problem solve, and figure out, you know, what some of the issues were and get some information out to families. I think in a matter of a week, we were able to see those numbers of people who have difficulty, you know, drops really be minimized through the process of, you know, it was great, so thank you. And I know there's always, there's still glitches, but, you know, just like, you know, picking them off all the time and really seeing what the trends are and being able to identify the problem and fix it. And thanks for keeping the student help desk up and running. Having an high school help desk, it's huge. So I'm glad that was a new addition, you know, at the end of last year. I'm glad to see it up and running again.
Questions or comments from the committee? Seeing that, if I could have unanimous consent, I would like to take under all business number four, Walpole High School renaming effort, students will push.
Okay, so we're going to take Steven, number four, the high school renaming effort. Out of the four, so we can get to that now. So, hold on one second.
Steve's close to the evidence, so.
Okay, too. I'm just getting my shoes since we're taking it out of order. There we are. So I just want to just read a couple names and then we'll get to Steven. So the commission on renaming has been focusing on the beginning of the high school mascot. As you know, the school committee voted to permanently retire the use of the name Rebel in association with any Walpole Public School team, club team organization. And in order to solicit feedback, this dynamic and diverse group of students, staff, or coaches along there, and community members created, to hear them talk about, you know, what they're doing and what they've created and maybe what, you know, we're going to come here with the meeting.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So everybody, so the commission on renaming, it gets started.
It was a little delayed with trying to get school opened, but we did have our first meeting on September twenty-ninth in the auditorium. Our task was stated is to explore and recommend several names for the Walpole High School new mascot. The plan is for us to solicit suggestions from the greater community and then choose five or six names for a final vote. A survey was sent out on the e-notes last Friday to solicit suggestions from the community. Currently, we have four-hundred-and-fifteen suggestions, and they keep coming in. It was decided that this survey should be widely disseminated throughout the community through email, social media, newspapers, the rebellion, et cetera. It was also decided that a poster would be designed, and one of our students, Bria Foley, will be designing that, which can be brought around to restaurants, stores, library, council on aging. And this will have a QR code on it so that people will be able to take the survey as soon as they see the poster. It was decided to leave this survey out there for one month, so the due date will be October thirty-first. There was a lengthy discussion amongst the commission members as to who should have the final vote. The consensus was for the following groups to have this final vote: the current high school students, the current middle school students, current WHS staff, and the current varsity coaches. Once the name has been decided upon, we will discuss the possible design of a logo. So that's, we have our work cut out for us with four-hundred-and-fifteen suggestions in the first five days. I'm expecting that we'll be doing quite a bit of work to whittle this down to five or six by the end of the month. Any questions on the process?
It sounds like a good start, Steve. Do people have questions? I think the one thing that I would add is if it is less than five, that's okay also. I think you don't want to get too many, but, you know, I think that if it was four, that would be all right also. But I think you're off to a great start. Did you get that, Steven?
No.
Do you think that if it's less than five, that that's okay?
Well, I don't know what to add right now because we have quite a few. I think it'd be a difficult task to bring it down to even five or six, but we'll reach a consensus within the commission, I'm sure, and put those ones out for a final vote.
Okay, and the other piece to this whole thing will be the fundraising component. And I think the way to approach that is some conversation with the business office, and we'll discuss it further at our next school committee meeting.
My just fundraising component and having a conversation with the business office at our next meeting.
Are there any other questions for Steve? Sorry it went so long, Steve, but thank you for being here tonight. Okay, that gets us.
Thank you, Steven, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
You can leave now. And our screens will get bigger so we can see the three of us on the screen.
Okay, that gets us to the October one enrollment numbers. Bridgette?
Yes, so you have in your packet just the total of enrollment effective October first, 2020. So they're broken down obviously by school, and you'll see hybrid and remote.
Great, are there any questions for Bridgette? I was just wondering how many half-day kindergartners you have.
I'm even going to ask that on the half-day, and I have that.
Oh, definitely.
So if we're looking at that, we have a total of forty-eight half-day in there. So if you, just a little breakdown, you know, Boydin has a half-day of ten, their full day is forty-three, Hal, half-day eighty, full day seventy-eight. Fisher, half-day sixteen, and full day eighty. The big class, Fisher class kindergarten. And OPR, half-day fourteen, and full day sixteen-one. And I can send you those numbers too.
Any other questions about the enrollment?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just curious, we don't have it on here, if the numbers of students who opted to attend the private school this year was dramatically different than in years past? the private school this year was dramatically different than in years past?
Good question. So it's the number of students who attended private that's different than years past. I think what we see more is more of an uptick carried in homeschool and correct bill than in private school. We've actually seen, both seen people come back from private school, which usually can, and then we've also seen people go, but I've seen more of an uptick. So I think you can speak to that, Cheryl, you know, an uptick in homeschool.
Yeah, and that's consistent across the state that all districts have grown three times a year.
Any other questions about the enrollment? I would just point out that that is a big kindergarten class, and, you know, it's a healthy sign for the Walpole Public Schools, and it's something to watch like a year from now to see if it's a trend or if it's unusual. Okay, that gets us to the next item, which is the personnel update. Bridgette?
Yes, so in the packet, a pretty healthy personnel update. We're usually, you know, one page, a half a page of new personnel through the pandemic, and we have a combination of people retiring, we may have people on leave of absence, you may have maternity, and then also taking a look at our full remote at the elementary, and then also needing to hire long-term subs or building subs. So we have over, at this point, and some of them are just for the year, but if it goes on extended day, and you have an order by position, is 101. That's how many people will be hired over the summer. And there are some unfilled positions in your packet, and I gave you an updated one because those numbers are dwindling as well. I think we'll be still looking for some educational support professionals as well as just some life. We noticed most of these are long-term subs for the year. So a lot going on, a lot changing.
Okay, if there are no questions, I'm going to keep going to the first item, mental business, which is about trying to remove an item from the FY21 capital budget request.
Correct. So if you remember, who gave you a first reading of the capital request, and this one I'm going to let Mike, so you can hear me, that the school committee, at the school committee to remove the Walpole High School sign boards and the list of capital requests, and that we're in collaboration with the town administrative plans to fund this item through an alternative source of funding. So Mike, do you want to explain a little bit about that?
Sure. So after exploring the multiple sources for the high school sign board project, the school committee has chosen to remove the project from the original FY21 school department capital list. School administration, in collaboration with the town officials, has chosen to use COVID-19 federal funding dollars to fund the project rather than, you know, town-appropriated funds. Initial review of the sign board project by the agencies governing COVID relief have been positive, and the project will be funded under the communication portion of COVID relief funding. So anything that relates to communication, getting the information out to individuals is considered in that bucket of communication and will be funded by COVID relief. Sign board will be used to provide timely information for all Walpole Public School families related to the pandemic and its impact on the Walpole community. The sign will also provide an additional source of information for high school families who do not use social media and would benefit from a more direct method of communication. So a vote tonight will be needed to remove the sign from the FY21 capital list.
Any questions? If not, just take a motion, please.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Ms. Green, to remove the Walpole High School sign from the capital budget list and to fund it through an alternate source of funding, very likely the COVID funding. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, 700.
What was 700?
I think we should also take a vote for the allocation from the town, at town meeting, for the Medicaid, the McKinney-Vento, and the parking funding. I apologize, Mike, not asking you to do this beforehand, but do you know what the total amount for those three turned out to be?
Mike, do you happen to have the figures for the total amount from McKinney-Vento to parking?
And Medicaid?
Medicaid.
They don't have it on me. I would have to look it up. Sorry.
I don't think I have it.
Bridgette, can you come back to me?
Absolutely.
All I want is the total number, Carrie.
Mike, if we do, then they can vote on it tonight.
All right. Just go back to the multiple points.
Okay, the next item that we'll take up is an amendment to the face covering policy. There's a suggestive amendment in our pocket, and there's universal agreement that both the WTA and the administration feels that we would be better off not allowing bandanas, gaiters, and masks with holes in them.
Correct.
Any questions about that? If not, I'll take a motion? Yes, absolutely.
Just, you know, after you vote, if it is a motion to approve this face covering, if you could just give, you know, a key days of the time, so if there are a couple of students, there's not many, but it would give them an opportunity to have the proper, so people are on it tonight, that they don't have to go tomorrow and get something.
Good point. I would pick not this coming Monday, but a week from, that that would be the start date of that policy. So October 19th, maybe? That's another idea? Okay, so the amendment to the policy would be to say that starting on October 19th, gaiters, bandanas, and masks with holes in them are no longer, are now allowed on the whole property. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Sarah.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Ms. Green, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. Thank you. And we do have a total number for the three items, Medicaid, McKinney-Vento, and parking is $318,734 that we're asking to get transferred to the school department at town meeting. Any discussion? If not, we need a motion?
So moved. Sarah.
We have a motion by Bill, a second by Mark, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. I think we've gotten through everything. Are there any subcommittees hoping to report tonight? There are no citizens here to comment, and that gets us to warrants, donations, and minutes. Sean?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the following accounts payable. Just the count payable warrants in your packet for the amounts listed, numbers 221013 and 221014.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ahern, a second by Ms. Penizio, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. Great. Somebody want to give this?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve the following gifts, Boydin School, Fisher School, and Old Close Grove School, received September 24th from Bay State Textile Recycling in the amount of $642. Systemwide, on September 22nd from Middlesex Savings Bank, general donation in the amount of $1,250. And to Walpole High School, Berg Middle School, and Johnson Middle School from September 23rd, the Chef Family Foundation and Mrs. and Mrs. Gupta Book Donation to the library in the amount of $186.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Penizio, a second by Ms. Syrah, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. Okay, and we have minutes from the September 24th meetings. Do you want to take that?
Three, Madam Chair, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th school committee.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Ms. Syrah, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. And Ms. Green?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Green, a second by Ms. Penizio, all those in favor. Opposed, abstain, 700. Good night, everybody, and thank you for sticking with us.
Thank you.